Thank you, and good morning, everyone. And welcome to the Committee of the Whole Meeting of Asouis Town Council on Monday, April the first, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. in council chambers. And I did not bring any bunnies with me today, Mr. Andrew, but I do have 24 of them in my basement, ready for the Easter egg hunt, and 3,500 chocolate eggs, so we're ready.[29.11][29.11](Laughter).[30.11][30.11](Laughter). So, we will call the meeting to order. Is there any introduction of late items? Yes, there is. There's one, and that would be a verbal report from Ms. Van Veenen and me concerning emergency operations and lake levels. Okay? So, could we, do we need to, yes, get back here. We need to have that added, and then the, could someone adopt the Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda as amended? Thank you very much, Counselor King, Counselor Rhodes. And first off, we have a delegation from the Community Energy Association, and I know it says that Trish Dannel is supposed to be here, but it's not. It's Peter Robinson. So, he's the Chief Technology Officer, and thank you very much for coming. Would you like to come up to the microphone? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor McCorduff. Yeah, thank you very much to you and everyone here at the town for having us here. So, can everyone hear me okay? I'll just raise it up. Okay. Can everyone hear me okay? Great. So, yeah, so I'm Peter Robinson with the Community Energy Association, and so the Community Energy Association is a small, small, we're 13 people, nonprofit and registered charity, been going for more than 25 years now, and our charitable mandate is just to help communities in Canada with energy sustainability and climate action. That's all we do. We do a lot of different things with respect to that. We do work on electric vehicles, work with energy efficiency of new and existing buildings, and we are also the regional climate advisors for the Federation of Canadian Municipalities' Partners for Climate Protection Program for the B.C. and Yukon. So, oh, so previous slide? Yeah, okay. So, what is the Partners for Climate Protection Program? Or PCP for short. It's a network of over 300 Canadian municipalities that have committed to reduce greenhouse gases and act on climate change. And, you know, they've said that they're gonna, so it's kind of like a public statement. There's no penalties if you kind of don't progress through things, but it's just kind of like a public statement saying, you know, we want to, you know, be part of this group of communities that's trying to move forward on this. It is a partnership between the Federation of Canadian Municipalities and an organization called ICLIC. It is free to join, and there's also free support to join and report through the regional coordinators who are us, you know, for the B.C. and Yukon. And so there on the screen there, you can see little dots showing all of these more than 300 Canadian communities that are part of the network, and just advance to, yeah, so there's 86 B.C. members, and again, and the Okanagan members are the Central Okanagan Regional District, Kelowna, Penticton, Summerland, and Lumbi as well. And next slide. So, there's been a lot of progress in B.C. since, well, so in 2017, 2018, there's kind of a snapshot of the communities that have been moving forward with things, a whole bunch of new members came on, and a whole bunch of progression through it. There's kind of like this milestone sequence in the program, and so lots of communities went through these milestones. A community can have a maximum of up to kind of 10 milestones, as it were. In 2018 and 2019, there was even more progress as well on top of that, so. And then next slide. So, yeah, benefits to joining. It's, to me, really, it's about that kind of, that recognition, that public statement. You know, yes, we think this is an issue, we want to move forward and be part of, be part of a team that's kind of moving forward on this. There is also kind of pure network and resources available, but it's really, I think, about the recognition, and it's recognition locally, but also nationally. Next slide. So, this five milestone framework, I said you can get, a community can get up to about 10 milestones, and so when communities work on energy consumption and emissions reductions, then they do things through a corporate perspective and a community perspective as well. So, corporate league will be all of your infrastructure, all the assets that the town owns, and community-wise, it's everything within the kind of municipal boundary, so kind of, you know, working with residents, working with the school district, working with interior health, and so on. And, but the framework, whether it's corporate or community, it's kind of the same kind of process, whether it's corporate or community. And so, and it's really, actually, it's very straightforward. I know there's kind of a lot of words on this slide, but it's pretty straightforward. It's really, first of all, you've got to know where you are, so have that baseline greenhouse gas inventory and forecast. Step two, just have a target. Where do we want to go after this? You know, we know our missions are this much, where do we want to go? Step three is how are we going to get there? Have that plan. Step four is start implementing the plan, and step five is then to figure out, well, now we've done a few things, where are we? What progress have we made? Next slide. And so the town of Asouis would actually already be eligible for quite a few of these milestones, because, you know, you already do corporate inventory work, you already have a community energy plan as well, that I believe was done by Stantec, or you said there was a engineer, there was a firm called Shelter that was then bought by one firm and then bought by another, but it was that team that was responsible for your plan through the regional districts of Okanagan, Summerland, kind of coordinated the project there. Anyway, so, yeah, so basically, so you have the corporate inventories you already have will help you to be eligible for this corporate milestone one, the community energy emissions inventory work that's already been done as well for the town through the province of B.C. and through this firm will allow you to be eligible for this community milestone one as well, and then your community greenhouse gas target, which is already in your OCP, allows you to be eligible for community milestone two, your energy plan, community energy plan allows you to be eligible for community milestone three. Next slide. And the fact that you already report on what you're doing as well to the province through your carrot reporting means you're probably actually eligible for community milestone four, because communities, one of the interesting things about communities, and I see this across B.C., I've been with this organization now for over 10 years, and I've been all over B.C. and done perhaps about, I don't know, 30 energy plans and supported dozens of communities with various things on energy and emissions reductions, and communities are often surprised at what they have been doing, you know, whether that's, you know, the people on the staff side, the political side, and, you know, when we start saying, well, have you been doing this, have you been doing that, and we look through past carrot reports, and there's often a lot of surprise, like actually, we have been doing a lot, you know, just even, you know, improving our main street. That actually, you know, helps to encourage people to start walking instead of driving around, you know, because they want to get out and walk and enjoy, enjoy the community and walk around, and that's actually, that's all part of emissions reductions. And then milestone five is the final one, which is actually kind of a lot of work to get, and let's just think about that one at another date.
Yes.
Yeah. And then next slide. So, a few key takeaways. PCP is free. Asouis already qualifies for a lot of milestones. We provide you with free support just to put together, you know, that, those packages for FCM, just that milestone recognition. Joining PCP may help with funding. Now, this is an interesting point right here, because more and more funding from the province of B.C. seems to be tied to something around emissions reductions, and it seems to be, so for example, if you've heard of, for example, the new Clean B.C. Fund, the new Clean Communities Fund from Clean B.C. is absolutely tied with emission reductions, so that's quite an interesting one, for example. And joining PCP will help with recognition, which is point five there, and I think that's the end of the presentation. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I will just see if anybody has anything that they'd like to comment on. Do you have anything, Ms. McKay? You were looking like too dead.
Good morning. It's always unusual if I don't.[530.16][530.16](Laughter). Personally, I think this is a great opportunity for our community, and the fact that we're already reaching milestones, but as I like to say, you had me at qualify for funding.[541.54][541.54](Laughter). So, I'm not sure if Mr. Zachal had any comments, because he works closely with planning and operational services on our reporting, so I'm not sure if you're...
No, I also believe that this is something that might be well worth joining up, being partner with.
So, it looks to me, when I was listening to it, that we are doing many of these things already, and I'm not quite sure if this is free, what, how do we proceed from here, and is there application forms to fill out, or is there something you have to do and prove that you're already doing things? How does that work?
Oh, actually, well, the first step is just a resolution, and so a resolution that is adopted by council, and they request that a community provide both a staff and an elected representative to be kind of the points of contact, and this initial resolution is just, is kind of like a statement of kind of interest, really, saying, yes, we're interested in this, we want to move forward, but a community doesn't necessarily have to have done anything at all at that point in order to join.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I just honed in on the funding opportunity. When you say joining you would help, does that mean that you would partner in a grant, or is there an example of another community that has received some funding?
Um, I'd say wouldn't, I can't say that would definitely help, but I think it may help.
Okay.
Just given the, there seem to be more and more funds which are available at the moment, which are linked to climate action at the moment. So, for example, I mentioned the Clean Communities Fund, there's another one from the federal government, which...
Government, which is a big one, yeah.
Yeah. And there's, well, there are some other things as well, which are kind of linked to climate action in one way or another. So, for example, the village of Lumbi, shortly after joining, they ended up, they put electric vehicle charging station outside the village office, and they received a grant from a nonprofit organization called, well, through the North Growth Foundation for a 50 percent grant for solar panels that are kind of linked to the electric vehicle charging station. Yeah. Thank you.
Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Cordoff. Well, I think we've got next steps down, and I'm just curious, when you say that membership is free and that type of thing, where do you get your funding from?
So, our funding...
I know you touched on it a little bit, but...
Yeah. Our funding for this comes from FCM. Yes, and FCM receives that funding through something called the Municipalities for Climate Innovation Program, which was through the federal government. So, they receive, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, they seem to, as far as I understand, they seem to receive allocations of money from the federal government every now and again to help them with this kind of work.
Okay. So, I would like to suggest that we ask staff to prepare a report where we could, we could look at all the issues of this. Would that be an appropriate way to proceed?
Yeah.
So, does somebody want to make that, say that...
I'll take that motion.
All right. A resolution to ask staff for a report, is that what it is? Do we need it seconded as well, Mrs. Hilsen? Okay. So, Counselor King, Counselor Rhodes, all in favor? Good. Thank you very much. We will certainly look at it. Thank you for coming. Next is the, this is Ms. McKay, the B.C. Provincial Nomination Program. I'm sorry.
You have Asouis Lawn Bowling.
Lawn bowling.
I do apologize. I skipped it right here. Okay. So, the Asouis Lawn Bowling, where am I? In here? And would you like me to read this, or how are we going to? We do have a letter from the Asouis Lawn Bowling Club asking for a, well, there are several things that they've, they've asked for, to a renewable, long-term renewable lease, five years minimum, 10 years preferred, and they have provided the reasons for that and the advantages to the town and the community. So, pardon me?
Yes, Eleanor, would like to make a presentation to council in respect...
Oh, pardon me. I do apologize. I didn't see that on here. You go ahead and talk to us about it. Thank you very much.
Those darn bunnies.[845.56][845.56](Laughter).
They're affecting me, aren't they, today? Go ahead, Mrs. Dempster. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor McCordoff and councilors, for providing this opportunity to appear at the council meeting this morning. My name is Eleanor Dempster. I'm the secretary of the Asouis Lawn Bowling Club. I'm here on behalf of the club in support of its application to renew its license to occupy land in Gyro Park that accommodates the lawn bowling green. The sport of bowls has been an integral part of the community since Asouis became a village in 1946. Over time, with valued support from various town councils and volunteer efforts of many club members, the Green earned the popular distinction of being the most beautiful lawn bowling location in the Okanagan Valley. Many out-of-town visitors have commented that it is second only to the site of the Stanley Park Green in Vancouver, where the coastal climate supports a lush garden of roses and rhododendrons that surrounds the venue. Members of the Asouis Lawn Bowling Club maintain a garden that enhances the beauty of our green and Gyro Park. Expansion of the garden is in our long-range plan, when we anticipate planting hardy, reblooming roses along the fence perimeters. The Asouis Lawn Bowling Club believes and promotes the concept that interconnectedness enriches a community. It places a high value on human well-being and activities that promote a healthy lifestyle. In recent years, the club has acted upon that doctrine by increasing its focus on engaging with the community. We have had a junior program in place for anyone between the ages of eight and 18. We host popular free events such as the annual community house, public drop-in days, and activities to celebrate special holidays and to honor families. In partnership with local schools, we organize student visits as part of their P.E. programs. We are always happy to welcome residents of Country Squire when they are able to visit the Green. We welcome visitors from anywhere and promote club membership in Asouis and Oliver and other area localities. During 2019, we will continue and expand on our successful marketing and publicity strategies in an effort to engage the community and increase club membership. As in the past, we will again be hosting group events. Some groups are from out-of-towns, such as the Beta Sigma Phi Group from Kelowna that intends to be on the Green in May, and the MG Car Club from the Lower Mainland that will be returning for a third visit with 40-plus members who will be here for another good time and lunch. Local groups like Hotels Edward Jones Financial and the Red Hatters have enjoyed time on the Green for business and employee networking and to learn about lawn bowling. This year, we are launching a three-free lessons program that is designed to introduce people to the sport of bowls and encourage membership in the club. Lessons will be conducted on 16 nights over eight weeks. Our goals are to grow the sport of bowls and enlist one new club member for each night of the program. We will also continue our in-house program of clinics and workshops designed to increase the skill level, confidence, and enjoyment of club members. These member-only activities have been effective, as evidenced in 2018 by the success of our club team at area tournaments and at the 2017 55-plus games. Since 2014, we have been honored and grateful to have seven sponsors commit to sporting, supporting the club financially. Asouis Credit Union, Bylow Foods, AG Foods, Edward Jones Financial, Jojo's Cafe, Walnut Beach Resort, and Best Western Sunrise Inn are all our sponsors. Their generous support has enabled the club to offer programs and events that would otherwise not be enjoyed by the community. It has also enabled us to maintain the bowling green at a high standard. If given the opportunity, the Asouis Lawn Bowling Club's long-range plans for the bowling green include replacing our storage sheds with larger and more secure ones, expanding the garden, continuing to repair and improve the quality of the green, acquiring nightlighting to give people who work during the day an opportunity to take part in the sport, ensuring continuity of its community and club programs, and celebrating with the community in 2022 on the occasion of the club's existence in the same location for 75 years. Of course, all of this requires continued support from the town. A long-term license to occupy the green at Gyro Park will provide assurance that the Asouis Lawn Bowling Club and the town of Asouis are moving forward with the same goals, to include lawn bowling in the town's well-rounded roster of sporting venues that are valued by an all-age-friendly community. Thank you for hearing my presentation. This concludes my comments, Mayor McCordoff.
Thank you very much, and I'm certainly pleased to hear how much you have the community involved in this, and I think that's the way to grow your, your sport, for sure. Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great presentation, and it sounds like you're definitely moving in the right direction. You're asking for an extension of your lease. How long is your lease right now, your term?
It expires at the end of September of this year, I believe.
And it used to be a one-year, two-year, three-year?
This last term was for two years.
Okay.
Shortly before that, we had one-year renewable. Before that, we had five-years renewable, so...
Okay, thank you. Yep.
Thank you. Can I ask, if someone wished to come and join, I know you have some sort of free nights where you give people some lessons and get them interested, how would they join, and which nights do you actually, are you down there? Because it's not five nights a week, is it?
No. Currently, we're, our regular nights are Monday and Wednesday and Friday, from 5:45 to whenever the game ends.
Okay.
Usually by dark, and otherwise, when we have our three-free lessons program, come down any Tuesday or Thursday and register, and you start your lessons from that night that you first come.
So, in that case, you'd be open sort of five nights a week, then, if you're doing the lessons on Thursday?
Yes, and also, we have times that we're on the green on weekends as well. We have an in-house program that we call the Bent Ladder, where people can come and play games of pairs and challenge each other, and also, this year, we're opening the green to the public to drop in at the same time, so that they can see some people bowling and actually take, take part in the lawn bowling process. There are other times that can be arranged. If you give me or another member a call, we'll meet you down there and take you through the basics.
Thank you. Do you start at the beginning of April? Is that when you, or do you wait?
We wait until May, because the green, spring green maintenance happens in April, and it's usually not finished until the end of April, so first of May is our opening.
And it goes to the end of September?
Yes.
Yeah, good. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any concerns? Do we ask to have staff look at this and come up with a, with a, yeah, so we need to request that staff look at this and come back with a report on, on what is recommended? Counselor Rhodes, Counselor King, all in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, next is you, Ms. McKay, B.C. Provincial Nomination Program.
Thank you, Mayor McCordoff. So, a little bit of background for you. The British Columbia Economic Growth depends, of course, on having enough skilled and qualified people to meet labor market demands. The B.C. Provincial Nomination Program is a way for high-demand foreign workers and experienced entrepreneurs to gain permanent residency in British Columbia. Director of Planning and the Senior Planner recently attended the B.C. Economic Summit. Among the sessions at the summit was a discussion and presentation from the Ministry of Jobs, Trade, and Technology on the recently announced B.C. Provincial Nomination Program. Following the conference, I also attended a workshop on the program at the immigration offices in Vancouver. So, the entrepreneur immigration stream is for businesspeople who can invest in and actively manage a valid business in B.C. It is a point-based system, and applicants must also have the required personal and investment funds. The town of Asouis has been registered as a rural community interested in participating in the program, so we've already signed ourselves onto it, because there was a, there's a very short window within which you could opt into the program. So, planning staff are currently working on a number of initiatives to support the program, including preparation of background data on land uses and business opportunities. There are a number of other steps needed in order to fully launch the program in Asouis, for example, preparing information for the provincial immigration website, preparing an application and Skype interview process, and reaching out to settlement organizations. The new 2019-2020 South Okanagan Relocation Guide will be available soon, and the guide will be a good first step in providing assistance to newcomers to our community. However, additional support will be needed from our community members. As staff continue to work on launching the program, we will be reaching out to the greater community, including faith-based organizations, to help establish a support network for this important project. Staff will continue to provide updates to council as this progresses. It's for information only, there's no actual options associated with this report, so just to clarify, we've opted into the program, but if you go onto the website, you won't find Asouis as one of the, one of the communities listed, because we haven't done all the other requirements to, to actually launch into the, into the program, and so I'm not sure. Anybody has any questions?
So, I have a, go ahead, Counselor King, you go ahead first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question, in the report, you mentioned the South Okanagan Relocation Guide. Who produces that?
I, there's a new company this year that's producing it, so it is the same guide that we have up at the front. I believe we have a copy of it, the last year's, but it's a great resource, and the Senior Planner is just in the process of updating the section on Asouis, so that we make sure that it's, all the information is up to date.
Okay, that includes the whole valley, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you.
So, may I ask, we have a, a program in town, have had for many years, which is, I thought, was similar to this, and...
Right.
And I think it's people coming in and buying up existing businesses and learning with the operators of that business, and then eventually taking over. Can you explain the difference between those, and is the one that I'm referring to still ongoing, or has it stopped?
Thank you, Mayor McCordoff. It's a good question. So, the current program is still ongoing, and so that's available to any community all over British Columbia. This particular program is only targeted at rural communities, and it's meant to encourage immigrants to consider coming to the rural communities in British Columbia instead of going to sort of the larger centers, and it's specifically designed for people that start a new business. So, you couldn't purchase, for example, an existing business, you have to actually start a new business, which is, of course, one of the reasons we're very much interested in that in Asouis, is for people that want to start a new business. So, we're busy preparing background information to help direct people to certain industries in our community that we, we feel there's room for new business growth, so.
So, I'm a little bit concerned about, you know, people, say, immigrants coming here and not having enough support in terms of language and laws and bylaws, and that, is that, is that given to them?
So, one of the requirements to enter into the program is actually that you have to, you have to have good communication skills in English, so that's a requirement. There's a test that they have to take through the province of B.C. and the federal government, and it's the same test that you have to take if you're going to work for the federal government, for the bilingual test. So, that's why I say there is a number of steps that we need to put in place, and that includes, you know, a visit program, how do we have these people come to our community, and schedule visitation for them to come around, and who is going to be showing them around the community. So, that's why I say there are a number of things we need to put in place to make sure that they have the support in the community. You'll recall, we did have a presentation from the group of Oliver that offers support to new immigrants to our community. You'll recall that they, they came to visit with us, and I think it was a real eye-opener for me of all the programs that they provide through that location, so.
Good. Thank you. Anybody else have any concerns? Good. Thank you, Ms. McKay.
Thank you.
And next, we have Ms. Van Veenen, Cannabis Consumption in the Public.
Thank you. On October 17th, 2018, consumption of cannabis is legalized in Canada. The province set out the following regulations with regard to cannabis use, and this is taken from the... taken from their website, on cannabis clarity ver, and it's verbatim, so I'm going to just read it out to you. Public use: Adults 19 and over can generally smoke or vape cannabis in public spaces where tobacco smoking and vaping are allowed. But remember, secondhand smoke can be harmful and irritating to people, especially children, so be mindful when smoking in public places. Smoking and vaping cannabis are not allowed in the following public places: playgrounds, sports fields, skate parks, swimming pools, and spray pools, or any decks or seating areas associated with these places; public buildings, workplaces, or common areas of apartments, condos, or dormitories, and within six meters of air intakes, windows, and doorways attached to these places; within six meters of bus stops, transit shelters, train stations, ferry docks, and similar places; regional and municipal parks, except for designated campsites; provincial parks, except for areas identified or designated; public patios; health board properties, except in designated smoking areas; registered hotel guests may smoke or vape cannabis in their hotel room if the hotel allows it; community care facilities, assisted living residences, and hospitals may designate specific rooms in which residents or patients can smoke or vape cannabis. Non-medical cannabis consumption in all forms is banned on K-12 school properties, as well as any adjacent sidewalks or boulevards. It's also illegal for both driver and passengers to consume non-medical cannabis in a car. The province also gives local and indigenous government the authority to set additional restriction on public use of non-medical cannabis under their powers to establish bylaws. So, that's what the province sets out as their regulations. So, the town's Parks and Community Facilities Bylaw Number 1278-2011 states, in Section 18D, "No person shall smoke on or in any park or trail unless a designated smoking area has been established for the purpose of a special event, with the area being determined by and with the agreement of both the town and the event organizer." And in the past, council has designated a smoking area in Gyro Park for Canada Day celebrations, so it's attached to the Beer Gardens. So, that is just an example of where we've used that section. And smoking is defined as "the lighting up and use of a cigarette, cigar, pipe, or smoking material of any kind that creates smoke that is taken orally, and includes the carrying of a lighted cigarette, cigar, pipe, or other smoking material or equipment." Therefore, the smoking of cannabis in parks and community facilities is already included in our bylaws. Council can consider an amendment to this bylaw to specifically include cannabis and vaping. Council can also consider whether it wishes to amend Traffic Bylaw Number 1256-2009 to address smoking of cannabis on sidewalks and public parking areas, or a general bylaw to address smoking and vaping of cannabis as a whole. It appears the provincial regulations cover most of what would cover storefront areas in the downtown area. However, there are still a few areas that could become problematic. Those include, but are not limited, the area between the Owl Pub and the Cold Beer and Wine Store, the area between Agee Foods and the Liquor Store, and the area on the north side of Main Street where there are empty lots. If the town does decide to have regulations of the smoking of cannabis in public places, consideration would have to be given as to what those locations would be and how it would be enforced. These areas could include public parking lots, all sidewalks in town, not just Main Street, and any other areas that are not already included in the Parks and Community Services Bylaw. Historically, council has also allowed for a special smoking area near the Beer Gardens during the Canada Day celebrations. This has been done with a special resolution as permitted under Bylaw 1278. Council will need to further consider whether this permission extends to the smoking and vaping of cannabis, or if it will be restricted to vaping non-cannabis, cigarette, cigar, and pipe smoking. Attached are two letters, one from Casa de Mila Oro, and one from Ken Murray, expressing concerns regarding public consumption of cannabis for council consideration. And the options, and there's two bylaws to be considered here by council, so I'll do it in two parts. Options, one, that staff be directed to prepare an amendment to the Parks and Community Facilities Bylaw Number 1278-2011 to reference smoking of cannabis and vaping in the definition of smoking. Or, that staff be directed to prepare an amendment to the Parks and Community Facilities Bylaw Number 1278-2011 to reference smoking of cannabis and vaping in the definition of smoking, and that Paragraph 18D be amended to exclude cannabis from the designated smoking areas, and further that smoking be prohibited in public parking lots adjacent to the parks. And in those two recommendations, staff recommends, or options, staff recommends Option Two, to clarify in Bylaw 1278 the prohibition of smoking of cannabis in parks, and to include vaping. Council should also consider whether the designated smoking area during Canada Day should or should not include the consumption of cannabis. If an amendment bylaw is being drafted, it would be good to include the public parking lots adjacent to parks as no smoking as well. So, that's the first two options. I don't know if you want to deal with those first, and then we can go to the other two?
Maybe you better go through all the, all of the first. It is confusing.
It is.
Yeah.
And then the next three options are, that staff be directed to prepare an amendment to the town's Traffic Bylaw Number 1256-2009 to prohibit smoking of cannabis in public parking lots and all sidewalks. Or, that staff be directed to prepare a general regulatory bylaw to address all issues relative to the public's consumption of cannabis. Or, that no changes to the Traffic Bylaw to regulate cannabis be prepared at this time. And staff recommend Option Five, as the provincial regulations cover a majority of the areas that could be considered nuisances and problematic, such as smoking cannabis near doorways, bus shelters, provincial parks, sports fields, schools, et cetera.
Thank you. I find, I, I know that Counselor Bennett printed this report off and has read through it four or five times, trying to make sense of it. It, it is a very confusing issue. So, I'm going to just open it up to anybody on. Counselor Rhodes, I'll let you go first.
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. So, I read this report with a great deal of interest. As you know, there's been some pushback about cannabis use in our community. But I am struggling with it. Am I being naive, or does all of our current bylaws kind of cover all of this already?
Generally, our Parks and Community Facilities Bylaw prohibits smoking of anything, including cannabis in the definition, but we, that was one thing we could clarify in our definition, that cannabis and vaping, because vaping isn't covered. Covers all parks, areas, community facilities, and that sort of thing. The question has arisen whether it includes the parking lots that are adjacent to parks, and that's where we kind of want to make some clarification, so that people can't just go from Gyro Park into the Gyro Park parking lot and start smoking whatever it is that they wish to consume.
So, if I could, Mayor?
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
So, I hate to turn these into, into rants, but...
Say for first.
There could, there could be nobody in this world, particularly in our country, that doesn't see the negative effects of smoking tobacco. And similarly, some of the health benefits of smoking cannabis or cannabis use and that kind of thing, it's pretty prevalent. I'm not going to go down that path or anything, but, you know, if we're going to start adding restrictions with regard to cannabis use in the public, I think we're distracting away from the real issue, which would be more control over smoking tobacco in our community, which is a harmful product for everybody to use, has zero health benefits, and costs everybody, you know, a couple of bucks out of their hourly wage, just for the health bene, you know, looking out to the health aspects in our community. So, I don't know. I just, I'm a little conflicted, and I'm kind of humming and hawing here, because, you know, our current bylaws cover it. I don't feel that they're restrictive enough. I'd like to see more restrictions on, on smoking tobacco products in our community. And one of the other things that we need to recognize is that smoking tobacco, not only doesn't have health concerns, but there is a debris aspect that comes with it as well. You rip open that package, it ends up in our garbage. Cigarette butts end up all over our community. And I've spoken and been very public about this in the past, and we do nothing to address that part of the concern. So, I apologize if it turned into a rant. I didn't mean it to. But I feel quite strongly that we need to focus on things that are not valuable in our community, and so...
Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think what I would do, though, by updating this bylaw, it actually puts a couple of words, is all I understand is being put, is cannabis and vaping, to make sure people understand when they say no smoking, that's included. So, I'd move Number Two option here.
You're seconding that? Okay. I guess one of the concerns that I had was, there are, there is smoking on Main Street. I mean, people do go down the street smoking. I'm not sure, to me, it doesn't make sense. I think it's kind of, you're very close to a lot of people that are walking in storefronts and that kind of thing. You can't avoid it. So, I think we need to be a little more vigilant in managing that, smoking of any kind, I think, on, on Main Street. I'm not, but I'm not sure whether that's included in this or, or not. So, go ahead, Counselor Harvey.
Yeah, oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. It seems to me that we're missing something here. Marijuana is an intoxicating product, and it's more akin to alcohol, to me, than tobacco in that regard, especially when edible products and things of that nature come into the marketplace. And so, I think we need to look at that aspect of our bylaw as well. Where is alcohol limited and why? And we should, you know, make sure that intersection is, is met.
Good. Thank you. Ms. Van Veenen, does this have anything to do with our bylaw which allows or doesn't allow drinking of alcohol? Is that included in here? Is that, because that's a good point that...
Yes, our Parks and Community Facilities Bylaw does prohibit the consumption of alcohol in our parks.
Including the parking lot beside the parks?
And that has always been that, that gray area. So, if you would like that amendment to include alcohol, to clarify, that is something that we could look at.
Well, I know that there, that people who are down in the parks may not smoke or do anything. I mean, they might, but they're not supposed to, in the park, but they would just go to the, to the parking lot, and it apparently is okay there. It's allowed there, apparently. No? Ms. McKay? And then CJ.
Well, I just wanted to mention that the consumption of alcohol in public places is prohibited in Canada.
Yeah.
Period. So, you know, I appreciate that, you know, it's, you know, we could clearly define it more to say, include the parking lot, but, you know...
It's already in there.
It's already prohibited.
You're not supposed to drink anywhere in the public.
So, it's up to the bylaw officer, poor bylaw people, that have to monitor all of this, right? Because I'm certainly not going down the street and telling people not to do it. That's not, I don't think that's in my job description. Counselor Rhodes, you are next.
Well, I think our Planning Director covered what I wanted to say. I would also like to mention that I don't like, you know, amending and making new bylaws when they're already covered. You know, we have enough bureaucracy that, that kind of helps us get through the day in creating more, but I think it's more than covered in our current bylaws. I guess there's little or no harm in adding it to it, but I also would like to comment on the intoxication thing that was brought up with regard to the two of them. The harmful effects of alcohol in our community touches everybody in some form. It ruins families, people have addiction issues, and a great deal of stuff that we do in our community is revolving around problematic things with it. I have not seen or heard that part of it with cannabis use in our community, or anywhere else, for that matter.
Oh, yes, Ms. Van Veenen.
Just to clarify, the reason we do include alcohol in our parks bylaws gives us the ability to fine under our municipal ticketing bylaw. So, that, that is why we include it in our parks bylaw as an infraction for the town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we have a motion on the floor, Option Two, that staff be directed to prepare an amendment to the bylaw, and it's been moved and seconded. So, I think we should vote on that. All in favor? Against? Okay, thank you. That carried. So, I, my assumption is, when this comes back, there will be more opportunity for us to have a look at it.
Absolutely.
Now, is there a next? You want to...
Now, the next one was to, to deal with the, with the traffic bylaw, and whether you wanted to include the prohibitive, prohibition of smoking of cannabis in public parking lots and all sidewalks. And that would include public parking lots that are not adjacent to parks, but, say, the one on Seventy-Fourth, or the one behind the Home Hardware, and public parking lots or public sidewalks. And whether you want to extend that prohibition to that.
Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll move Number Three, that staff be directed to appear amendment to the town's Traffic Bylaw 1256-2009 to prohibit smoking of cannabis in public parking lots and on all sidewalks.
Is there a seconder for that? Counselor Bennett? Anybody who would like to talk about this one? Counselor Rhodes? Another rant?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. Could I ask, is tobacco use covered already for these particular circumstances that are proposed?
Just under the provincial regulations, which is quite similar to that of smoking cannabis, and they have to be so much distance from doorways and air intakes and open windows and that sort of thing.
But a reason, as stated earlier, so I don't have to repeat them, why would we not include tobacco use in that?
Well, that's, that's...
Which has a tremendous negative aspect to our health.
We could.
Yeah. Staff can look into that for council and see, yeah.
Moved and seconded. Are you mover and the seconder? Are you okay with, did you want to speak to this call?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just think that we got to be careful if we start every street in town, we have one bylaw person, and somebody's walking on a cigarette. And how do we have the people to even try to...
I agree.
Deal with something like this by making it, smoking on every street?
I don't know.
Yes. Enforcement could be an issue.
Yes.
Yes.
It could be. So, we probably want to make it as reasonable as possible, so that we don't have to worry about bylaws running here and there and not catching people. And then we're in trouble, because, you know, somebody said, "Well, I saw somebody smoking," and nobody said anything about it. Counselor Rhodes?
Thank you, Mayor McCordough. I think it's important for us to recognize the difference between the two things that we're talking about. Tobacco use is a terrible detriment to all forms of life in our community. It's clearly defined and proven that we do not have the same effects from cannabis use. And now, we're going to restrict something that doesn't have much in the way of a negative thing, and we're just going to let tobacco use just carry on, and just doesn't make any sense to me.
Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if it'd be appropriate, are you asking to sort of make a friendly amendment and add smoking in this report that comes back?
In other words, tobacco use in there as well?
Yeah, tobacco use, yeah. Can I make that friendly amendment?
I might mention that it is quite common in a lot of communities to have a tobacco use restriction. Many, many communities don't allow it almost anywhere.
Well, I think we have quite a few regulations already about that. However, it's not maybe as far-reaching as we, as we want, eh? I'm totally in favor of that, if...
Because the report's coming back, and we can still discuss it more.
Yeah. Are you okay with that, Counselor Bennett? You seconded that motion, including tobacco, as well as cannabis in that? It's up to you.
I don't think so.
No? Okay. So, now, what do we do? We can't make the friendly amendment, because we don't have a seconder. Okay, so, what we have, can you please tell us what we have on the agenda, or what we've, we've got moved and seconded?
Number Three.
That...
That staff be directed to prepare an amendment to the town's Traffic Bylaw Number 1256-2009 to prohibit smoking of cannabis in public parking lots and all sidewalks.
Okay, if that's, yes. Go ahead.
Just to suggest it, I don't know if there'd be support from council, but we could actually defeat this motion, and then make a new motion, including... defeat this motion and then make a new motion, including smoking and cannabis, if we chose to.
We could, but...
Just as an option.
The motion is on the floor, so I'm gonna ask all in favor? Against? Okay. So, that has, that has, has not passed, so is there someone who would like to make a different motion? Counselor Rhodes.
I'm wondering about the, the time sensitivity of this. This is not only controversial, but some more facts and figures about other communities and how they've addressed this. I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to maybe ask for a more detailed and comprehensive report on it. I would feel comfortable with just kinda laying it to rest for a little bit, and, you know, unless there's some compelling reason to move forward with it today.
Well, quite certainly, that's, that's definitely something that staff can do, and we can come back with another report on, to include cannabis and tobacco consumption in public. Yes, we can do that.
Okay, I second that.
Good. Is, is there anybody else wants to speak to that? So, all in favor of asking for a further report? Okay? Against? No? You're okay?
He doesn't put his hand up, he votes yes.
I know. That's it. It's automatically a yes if he doesn't put his hand up.
He's waking up.
If anybody doesn't put their hand up. Okay, that is carried. Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Van Veenen, because I know this is a, this is a new issue that, that everybody's dealing with, and every time I hear about cannabis stores or, or smoking cannabis, it, it's different in just about every community, so we probably need to make our decision based on, on our best interests that we have for the town. Thank you very much, and we will now go to the community service grants. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff reviewed the grant applications with Counselor Bennett and Counselor King. We received over twenty-five applications and over one hundred thousand dollars in grant requests, and the spreadsheet is attached. The committee reviewed all applications and shortlisted the requests that fit the criteria. The amount of funding available this year was allocated at sixty-five thousand dollars. As part of this funding, two thousand dollars was allocated for individuals and teams who compete at a provincial level or higher. The policy states that grants can be approved for special events, facility rentals, tax requirements, special projects, and insurance expenses. The applicants must be nonprofit in nature and be providing a service to the residents of Assuys. Even though we could not fund all applications, we have made recommendations to share the funding accordingly. The goal was to provide funding to as many applicants as possible. In terms of options? Option one, for council to review and approve the recommended applicants and move to the regular meeting of council for approval. Option two, for council to make changes to the recommended applicants, approve the changes and move to the regular meeting of council for approval. Or option three, for council not to approve grant funding at this time, and right now we're looking for direction. This one need to go to the regular meeting for approval, and checks can be presented at the next meeting of council, which would be the, the next meeting in April.
Fifteen.
Yes.
Good, thank you very much. Thank you to, to the committee, Director Davis, and Counselor King, and Bennett for looking at, at this. We obviously had a lot more requests than we had the amount of money to divvy it up, so thank you for looking at this carefully and coming up with this, with this list. So, Counselor Rhodes.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask a question about the fireworks portion of it, the six thousand They did not request anything and were, am I reading that spreadsheet correctly?
They would normally put a request in, but the request is part of the grant application, just like our brochures are. That goes to the high school. That is correct. And that, and that is what they want, and that's what they get on an annual basis, as far as I know, unless Jim wanted to add something to that, but that's exactly what they have. And yes, that is correct.
Okay. Okay, so would somebody like to move one of the suggestions at the, at the bottom? Counselor King?
I'll move number one.
That we review and approve the recommended applicants and move to the regular meeting?
Yeah.
Good, thank you. Is there a seconder for that? Counselor Bennett? Anyone else like to speak to it? All in favor? Thank you very much, that's carried. The next item that we added to the agenda was just a verbal update on emergency operations and lake levels, and, and I will, I will just start, and it was Ms. Van Veenen and I that will do this. I think there, there are some, there's been some concerns about lake levels. Recently, it was reported that, that lake levels are, have been, are on the increase. That, I think, spooked a few people who thought, "Oh, my goodness, we're gonna have floods again." And in fact, that is not the case. The International Lake Assuys Board of Control, which is, which is governed by the, the IJC, all of Canada and the United States, has a range of levels that they try to adhere to, and that is done not only by the dam in Penticton, but mostly by the Zozal Dam, which is in Oroville. So, it's measured in feet, because it's in the States, not in meters, and so right now, the dam is not closed, it is open, but it's being regulated by the four gates that are there, and the idea is to, to bring it from the winter storage, which is about nine oh nine, nine ten, feet above sea level, up to nine twelve, sometimes a little bit higher, nine twelve point five, to try and keep it in that range. It's very dependent on the amount of snow and the amount of, of moisture, water in the snow, up at the snow pillows. It's also dependent on the Semilkamene River and the flows there. So, there's, and the amount of, of water that comes down through the streams, not only the ones up into Okanagan Lake, but the ones between Penticton and Assuys that come in, and last year, we, we know that there were, many of those streams were saturated, and the water comes down, where does it go? Into the river channel, and then, of course, it ends up in Assuys Lake. So, we're at the bottom. The, the, there are a lot of scientists, Department of Ecology, Department of Environment, who look at all of the issues and try and come up with something that is reasonable, and we talk about it. I'm on the, the director on that board, and we talk about it often and try and look at what is best. Sometimes, we cannot control it the way it's requested. As of last year, on March the twenty-ninth, the, the gates at the Zozal Dam were wide open, and they were not controlled until, I believe, the middle of July. So, that, in other words, the Zozal Dam was not doing anything to either move the water out or prevent the water from coming. It was totally open, there was nothing more that could be done. So, this year, they are, the, the two dam operators talk often, they are, they try and make a best, a best estimate about how much water to let in or out, depending on the snowfall, depending on water, rainfall, and those can happen at any time. So, right now, the Board of Control is suggesting that this will be what they call a drought year, and that's based on a lot of, you know, the amount of water that comes down per minute or something out of the Semilkamene, various things that they look at, and it will be looked at again, as a matter of fact, I have another conference call next week, because we know that two years ago, when this happened, and we said it was going to be a drought year based on all of the information, then there was snow, and there was horrendous rain, and it just totally changed the whole forecast. So, I think we're better prepared now to look at those things and manage those things and get on them very quickly. So, right now, the lake level is about, from the, from the measurement at the dam, is about nine ten point five. The idea is to try and raise it slowly so that it goes to nine eleven point five by June first. It was reported on Global News the other day that it was going to be at nine twelve by May first, but that has been adjusted to try and, and have it a little more slowly go up. So, that's, that's just one of the things. I just wanna make sure that people realize that it is not being left to guess, there's a lot of people involved that are trying to make the best decision. Sometimes, there are other things that happen that can't control it exactly the way you want, but believe me, it's, it's being talked about tomorrow. I have a meeting with the Okanagan Basin Water Board, which doesn't necessarily look at the lake levels in Assuys Lake, but Anna Warwick Sears, the executive director, and I are both directors on this as well. So, you know, there, water is water, and it's gonna find its, its place, and there's not a lot you can do to prevent that, but I think that from our point of view, we definitely are trying to keep a very close eye on it and manage it as well as possible. So, I'm gonna ask Ms. Van Veenen to talk about emergency operations.
So, I, I think Mayor McCordough has done a really good job of explaining what I have understood from the experts as well, and that is that the snowpack levels are low this year, below normal, so the risk of that has, is diminished greatly, and that's what we saw being a problem last year, we were almost at two hundred percent of snowpack, so that's why we saw the problems, especially in the Semilkamene. They don't anticipate that there will be any problems from the Semilkamene River this year. It is that drought-flood balance that they're trying to keep. Sean Reimer's been doing a good job of working with the IJC in balancing what is coming down this way and what is going down south. What they do say is that the ground saturation is high, so if you, if we do get some heavy rain events in short periods of time, so that means, you know, lots of rain and within an hour or two hours, that could affect the, the levels of all of the waterways, and, and we could see some minor flooding, so if there are people that have residences in that nine, nine twelve, that flood at the nine twelve level, they should probably, you know, just do some flood preparation just in case, but I don't, and from everything I've heard, don't anticipate we would see the flooding that we did last year.
Right.
And that's, that's the best we can guess, without knowing what the weather is going to be in the next month or two.
And also, I should just say that Ms. Van Veenen is in charge of the, of the emergency operations in Assuys, and when necessary, she is on a conference call at eleven o'clock every morning with people at the RDOS and all the way up to Kamloops, and they make decisions based on all the information that they have. So, there were a couple of people that said, "Gee, we didn't know that this was all going on, we didn't know there was Emergency Operations Center, you know, that's working in town." Yes, there is. And the other day, Donna, our executive assistant in charge of the webpage, put at the very top, if you go on the first page, our main page of the assuys.ca, you will see a header at the top that says "Lake Levels." And so, if you click on that, that will give you all the information about, it'll give you the, the daily range at the Zozal Dam, and it will give you pertinent information, or at least it will connect you with the information.
Just, just one further thing, for those people that could see that localized flooding because of, of heavy rain events, or if they do, the water does reach nine twelve, nine thirteen, right now, in that link from our webpage, there is a link to the RDOS news release that says there are some filled sandbags available at the Oliver landfill that people can go and access if they wanna pick those up, and we do have forty thousand that have been ordered for Assuys, just so that we have them on hand if, if it comes to that, but at this point, like you say, all indications are that, if, if anything, it'd be very minor.
So, if the lake level starts to go up higher than you anticipate, you will get the sandbags?
That's correct.
And make sure we do a public service announcement?
That's correct.
To tell people where they can...
And it would all be on our website, and we would keep the news, the information bulletins up like we did last year, but that is, if we start seeing heavy rain events, strange weather events, that sort of thing, you know, that, that, we always have to be prepared for those sorts of things.
Absolutely.
Yes.
So, it hasn't got that warm yet, there is still bits of ice floating around on the lake in front of my house, so I assume it'll be gone today, but is there anyone else that wanted to talk about this issue? Any questions about it? We're just trying to keep people in, in the know about it, and I must say thank you to Andrew Stuckey for putting this article in his paper last week. It was quite helpful. So, is that, that's all we have for today? Counselor King?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Counselor Harvey, you seconding that?
Certainly.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you, everyone.